We're an executive session for employment history of various individuals. And we came out of executive session at 6:59, and sorry, we're a little late. But welcome, thanks for coming. A couple of quick things, first off, Happy St. Patrick's Day to everybody. We see floods of green. This is as green as I have in my house. Thursday's St. Joseph's Day, by the way, so just mark your calendars. A couple of student things. First off, the girls' basketball team. At our last meeting, as we were breaking to the meeting, they lost a heartbreaker in the state regionals, I guess, first round of the regionals, overtime. Great game, but from what everybody tells me, and hats off to Ally Monteleone, who wrapped up her basketball career and undoubtedly will go down as one of the top female athletes ever to come out of the school, so kudos to them. The boys' basketball team advanced. They play this Friday in the Final Four up in Glen's Falls, and I guess they're doing a send-off on Thursday. And if anybody hasn't been to a Haldane send-off in recent years, you gotta go. They are small town, they're the best. I still have one on video from the volleyball soccer thing from the fall, and they are the best. And that's at the flagpole at 10:15. So definitely make it, good luck to the boys. And then for the high school musical was this past weekend, Pirates of Penzance. Fabulous. Hats off to all the kids, Martha McElachos, Katie Bissinger, all the fine arts people. The kids just did an unbelievable job, good crowds. I thought it was great. And it was a lot of fun, they're double cast, and it was cool. So hats off to all those guys. So good week for Haldane. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Bowers and Ann and everybody else.
Okay. So tonight, we're gonna talk, as a follow-up, talk to you as a follow-up to our last two budget presentations, and we have some additional information that we're going to share with you. And I'm not sure where Anna's... Oh, there you are. Oh, I thought you were gonna be over there. Are you gonna be up there?
I'm here.
Okay. You have the clicker? Oh, okay, sorry. There she is. We found her.
She used to do that to me when I was little.
I guess I was just looking in the wrong corner. So, well, Ms. Dineo.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you. All right. We'll start off this presentation with just going over the agenda. We're going to talk again about our budget parameters, the parameters that the board asked that we follow at the beginning of the budget development, educational enhancements, talk a little bit about the building condition survey and the funding of it, go over our proposed vehicle proposition, the tax levy limit, funding reserves and appropriated fund balance, the state budget, and the library proposition. First, the parameters that the board asked us to follow, first and foremost, stay within the tax cap. Opt out of the TRS contribution stabilization program, which it is in the budget at that level. We'll revisit later on in the year at what point to actually opt out, where, you know, financially what the best decision for the district would be. And that's a whole separate proposition or a presentation all to itself. So reduce appropriated fund balance amount, fund our depleted reserves without leaving educational holes, continue staff development in relation to our strategic plan, keep pace with technology, and expand, improve our website communication.
Okay, so some of the additional things, and I'm gonna be a little more lengthy with the discussion, but some of the things that we have included within the budget propositions for this potential coming school year will be the first is, we've talked quite a bit about the amount of staff development that we're hoping to provide for our teachers. We're looking at sending our teachers to institutes that will refine their skills. In addition to having ongoing targeted staff development, we are looking at a number of different groups that will be providing this staff development for us. You've heard a little bit about the P E B C, the Public Education and Business Coalition out of Denver, Colorado. They will help us intertwine metacognitive thoughts and discussions, and the staff development that we'll be enjoying within the next couple of days will be, again, targeted towards these areas. We will also be looking at learning strategy instruction, and that will all be infused into the P B L. Some of the other areas that we may be sending our teachers to, if this is supported within our budget, we're looking at Harvard University's Project Zero, and we are also looking at Columbia's Teachers College, the Reading Writing Workshop in New York City. We are also hoping to have a new discover, innovate, and create classroom teacher that will be out of our makerspace next year, that will be able to continue the P B L work, the project-based learning that we've begun within the walls of the Haldane School District. And this teacher will help co-teach and produce project work for our kids that will enhance what we are presently doing. We are also looking at the potential of bringing on a technology integration specialist that will help us develop our technology infrastructure and programming within the district that will match with the P B L and the discover, innovate, and create teacher. Earlier on, when we talked about both the discover, innovate, and create teacher and the technology integration specialist, we explained that a lot of the funding for this was actually coming from within the budget, from what we presently have, and we were hoping to take some of the dollars that were in different areas and repurpose them and reclaim them, and hopefully, we can fund both, the majority of both positions with money that presently exists in the budget. We also talked last time about providing instructional literacy support and possible increase in special education support for our students that are presently in kindergarten first and potentially second grade. We are watching very carefully the number of students that are enrolling into our kindergarten class for next year, and we're looking at the potential of having some additional supports for these students as well. We also discussed the middle school, high school alternative program that we are thinking about bringing a CTE component within the middle level in eighth grade and early high school, ninth grade program, probably a two-period alternative type setting for our middle school, high school. We are looking at students that would thrive in project-based experiences and have an interest in moving into kind of a kinesthetic type of BOSI's program when they move into high school. Additionally, we have funding in our budget for an SPO, a school peace officer or patrol officer, as they are also called. We have looked at the potential of bringing back both an SPO and an SRO next year. The cost of the SPO is within the budget, the cost of the SRO is about $20,000 more than we presently have in our budget. We have been in conversation with the sheriff's department as well as Putnam County about the potential of getting some funding to help offset the cost of an SRO as opposed to an SPO. Mr. Ohm, would you like to just share a little bit about your recommendations for this?
Sure. I mean, we'll be grateful as a district for either position, but I do have some experience with school resource officer in my previous district, and I can just say in a nutshell that if it's the right person, which, you know, Putnam sheriffs have told us that they would be very carefully selected and that we would have a little bit of a part in the process, but when it's the right person, that role is really essential in the school building. And it's a lot, it's much, much more than an armed presence on campus. Really, their role in the educational process can be instrumental, you know, whether it's from serving as a guest speaker and even helping instruct a particular class. We have a criminal justice elective. I could see a lot of work in sociology or participation in government, forensic science, physics with accident reconstruction. There are a lot of entry points for police officer in the curriculum, adding to driver safety beyond just our, our, thank you, driver's education program. And then in terms of the relationships that students build, it's an investment in community policing, in that students learn more about law enforcement personnel and how to interact with them appropriately, but also potentially a friendly face out there in the community, someone that already has a relationship with kids. Similarly, you know, we have lots of student resources, whether it's, you know, a teacher or a school social worker or a guidance counselor, but different students relate to different people in different ways, and having, I found, a law enforcement person in the building gives just one more individual that's available for kids from a counseling aspect. And beyond that, having a consultant for us as administrators right on hand, whether it's to kind of help guide an investigative type of inquiry or to just provide regular advice, of all things administrative is really essential. So with a really, really multifaceted role, a school resource officer can be a tremendous resource to a district.
Thank you. So additional opportunities that we hope to have in the budget, and we, again, a discussion within the last couple of weeks, we've talked about increasing the educational opportunities and electives within the high school and the number of full-time equivalents in both physics and home and careers. We've also discussed increasing the co-curricular opportunities, and there were three different co-curricular opportunities that were shared with us within the last meeting, Model UN, Pathways to Success, and ROR. And we also included contingent coaching funds. So within the last two pages of this PowerPoint, we have looked at a number of new educational opportunities for our students next year. And these educational opportunities are such that we will begin to bring back some of the program that's been cut and that's been lost by our district in prior years. Each of these potentials have been chosen very carefully, and these are things that we are looking at in the first round, hopefully, to be able to bring back into our school. These are things that are sorely needed. They're things that are paramount for our students' success, and as I think I described it in a way as triage, we're looking at the type of work, coursework, we're looking at the type of staffing that we need to be as the best and the brightest we can in this moment of time. There has been some clear change within the school setting with what we've been able to provide for our kids, and we're very glad that we may be potentially bringing some of them back.
Next, I'll just describe what the board wants, would like to see happen with our building condition survey. Our building condition survey is performed every five years, and it's our five-year capital facilities plan. We're due to have our survey performed this summer, and we have, the company that will do that for us will have to file specific reports with SED. The expense of this building condition survey is about $35,000. It does have to be put into our general fund budget. The board expressed the desire to fund the expense in '15-'16 through a capital reserve and then transfer the funds back in the '16-'17 budget year when the, when we get reimbursement from SED for that expense. Our proposed vehicle proposition is for three vehicles, two student transport vehicles and one maintenance vehicle. The total tentative proposition is $180,000. That would be funded through a five-year ban. There would be no payment due on this particular purchase until the '16-'17 budget because the ban would not be sold, we would not need the funds until after July 1st. So we would get the funds in '15-'16 and make the first payment in '16-'17. The vehicles that we're asking for is one big bus, that's to replace bus 59, which just passed its last DOT inspection. We were advised that it will make it through the end of this school year, but we're not to put it back up for inspection again. So that would, and again, as with the past few buses that we've replaced, there's more value to it for scrap than there is for trade-in value. Also, we're requesting one van. It's not a minivan, this is one of the 20-passenger yellow school bus, but it's a small bus. We've used every bus that we have in our fleet. If one does go out, and the only thing that we have that's a spare during the school day are the big buses, and by the end of the day with sports trips, we use those buses too. So during the day, if a vehicle goes down, no matter what size it is, a minivan, a small bus, or a big bus, it has to be swapped out for one of the big buses. And accordingly, bus runs juggled around. The maintenance vehicle that we're requesting is our pickup truck that's currently running on seven out of its eight cylinders. We do not anticipate it would make it through another winter. It was a cause for a couple of our delays to be extended this year, that, you know, it broke down during the snowstorm, and we, what we wouldn't want to happen is to get into the situation where we couldn't open school because we lack the equipment to do So that's it for the vehicle proposition. Our tax levy limit, our maximum allowable tax levy increase for next year is 2.72%. And with the tax freeze rebate, as a general rule, eligible homeowners will be fully reimbursed for increases to their taxes as long as the jurisdiction is below the tax levy limit. And that is the first parameter that the board did present to us, and the proposals that we're putting to the board does take that into account, that we will comply with the tax levy limit.
So I'd like to just add something to that. And the maximum allowable tax levy increase for the Haldane School District for next year is 2.72%. However, it is below the tax cap. And based on the way that we calculate the tax levy increase and based on the allowances, even though it physically is above 2%, with all the allowances and all the other factors that are considered within this calculation, the 2.72 is below the tax cap for next year.
And there's a video on the board budget page on the school website, which explains it perfectly. It's three and a half minutes, and it actually explains how a 2% cap is not a 2% cap, and it's spoken in English, which is, you know, a benefit. And I think it's just a great video that everybody should watch, and I'm gonna make a note mentally to send that to the PTA to send out as well. It really explains it very simplistically on how you get to the cap and what the misconception is, that 2% isn't 2%, it never was and never will be. And it's worth watching. I highly encourage it to everybody. And it's on our website.
And we also have information on the front page of the website that talks about how the 2% tax cap, or the fact that it isn't a 2% tax cap, is calculated, and all the different parameters that go into that. And so if you have some time and you have a few minutes, you wanna read a little bit about that, please do so. If you wanna look at the video, that will help as well. And it's a confusing calculation that is creating problems all throughout New York State because it's very difficult to understand.
Can I just jump in there?
Sure.
We're, as members of the Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association, we get provided at this time of year with surveys from around the region of where schools are budgeting and where their tax levies are established. So we got our first survey this afternoon, and in this area, tax caps range from lowest being 1.29% to the highest being 6.85%. So it's really, you think it's 2%, but it can vary enormously from 2%.
And if you follow the methodology of how they come up to it, it actually makes some sense, you know, with what they add in, what they deduct. I mean, it kinda does, I see what they're trying to get at and how they're trying to make sense of it, you know. It's not just some ridiculous crazy calculation. It actually does have some rhyme to reason to how they do it. Growth factors, new housing, they exclude growth in pensions that the schools can't control. So, I mean, it is what it is, but it's not crazy how they actually come up with a number. And it's formula-based, so it's not, you know, it's not a Houdini thing, it's, you sit down, you do the calculations.
And it's also based on the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, or 2%, whatever's lower. And this year, the 2%, as per the name, was actually 1.6, I think it's 7%. 6.2?
1.62.
1.62%. And so there's, again, and I've used the terminology misnomer because it is confusing. If you can call it the 2% tax cap, it is really the maximum tax levy increase that a district's allowed to have. And once again, what we just shared with you, the 2.72% is below our tax cap.
No budget discussion would be complete without funding reserves and appropriated fund balance. So Haldane's reserve funds are actually at a very healthy level. 10% is a rule of thumb, we're at 9.99. And the controller's stress monitoring system indicates that the district financially and environmentally are under no stress. So any operating surplus or increase in the revenue over what's necessary to implement proposal one, I know that the board has expressed their desire that it should be considered to reduce the appropriated fund balance. Our state budget is due April 1st, I hope, April 1st, because it will really put a wrench in any more than it already has been, if it's any later. So right now, we have on the table two proposals for our budget. Proposal number one shows a 2.11% spending increase, and that includes everything that has been presented under Educational Rationals Part One and Two that we discussed starting in February, and those presentations are on the website. Everything in those presentations can be implemented if an additional $115,000 from New York State is received or any other revenue source, but with our limited sources of revenues, I'm saying New York State needs to pull through for that for us. Proposal number two is a slight spending decrease to 1.78%. That includes some educational modifications, but it is solid at our current revenue projection level, especially if our education consortium goes through, then we're going to be able to implement proposal two as presented to the board. The difference between proposal one and proposal two are three slight modifications. To postpone the CTE program to a future date, reduce the technology integration specialist to half-time, and instead of increasing the physics position to a 1.0 full-time equivalent, to increase that to 0.8 full-time equivalent. Also, what we want to include in our discussion is the library proposition. New York State Education Law 259 says that a public library in New York State can place a funding proposition on a school district ballot. And if that proposition passes, the school district has to collect the taxes for the library and turn them over to the library. The amount, if the proposition passes, will show up on the tax bills at a separate, on a separate line, so that people can see what part of their tax bill is attributed to the library proposition. And the good news is that it will not negatively impact our tax freeze rebates. And that is all the information that I have for tonight.
Just to clarify, the library proposition, Butterfield Library was here last meeting, last Tuesday, and they gave a quick overview, and they had submitted a letter, which I guess appears under correspondence on our agenda, with their actual signed petitions. And just to clarify, the role of the school in this library proposition is virtually nothing. We don't technically by law have a say in whether or not they can or they can't put a proposition up. Section 259 says they can if they follow their guidelines, which is a petition and a board resolution at the library level. The only discretion the board has is whether or not they have it on the day of the election and where the actual vote takes place. But we have no say in whether or not it happens or it doesn't happen, and we have no conversations with what they're doing, why they're doing it, and how much they're doing it for. So I just wanted to clarify that, because I did get a phone call from someone over the weekend and said, "What are you guys, taking over the library now?" And I said, "No, let's back up, let's go through the proposition, let's walk through the language." But they're gonna do their outreach, but I just wanna make sure that it's clear, you know, what the role of the school is, which is nothing, for the most part, by law, not choice. So that's that. Okay. Board questions for Ann, Dr. Bowers, and anyone else in the mix? It's kind of a revision of what we got last week, not a lot of changes. I know we're in limbo a little with New York State, but there was some clarity to some of the things I think we had some questions on.
I just wanted to maybe, and maybe now Brent's here, he can comment about the CTE program as far as, like, who's the target for the eighth grade in the sense of, I mean, and we all know we've been big advocates of BOSI's, and I'm actually principal, my school's a CTE school. So, but it's a little different in the sense of, you know, we're exposing them to a CTE program, but then the reality is, though, if they wanna be in that program, they have to go to BOSI's. So is that a target audience? Could any students, you know, step up and say, "Oh, I wanna be, that sounds fun, that sounds great"? Like, what's the thinking there?
No, Evan, I think, our thinking is that we have, you know, from year to year, a few identified students who are at risk and who would benefit from that type of program to really maintain an interest and investment in their education. We don't really have an internal program with a district our size that can really capture their interest and their engagement in the way that we need and that would benefit their learning. So our thinking is, really, that from year to year, we do have a minority of students, a few students, that would really benefit from that kind of program.
But they do benefit from it, but what's the difference in, I'm sorry, the difference is, because we, I mean, we do, we have students that go to BOSI's, and that's great that we have that, and we're you supporters of that. So, but I'm just, I'm trying to get at what's the, the eighth grade, because this is eighth and ninth, first of all, so don't we send them to BOSI's after eighth grade, oh no, after ninth grade?
You're not eligible.
Eleventh grade.
Oh, I didn't even realize.
And this is offered onsite.
Oh, okay.
They can come here and do it onsite.
Oh, okay.
It's a unique kind of, sorry, custom opportunity that was created for us from BOSI's, like, truly a proposal specific to Haldane. Other, there are maybe two other districts- Other, there are maybe two other districts in the region that have a similar arrangement, but not quite exactly the same at all. It's customized for us.
And for the students that would truly like to be part of a CTE program, the fact that they have to wait until 11th grade is problematic.
Right.
And this will actually capture them and bring them into the fold and have a direct connection within the school district when they're at the point where they could ultimately become disaffected and not be happy in school. And we're trying to keep them as happy and healthy in the buildings as we can until they have the opportunity for some support outside of school.
Okay. Yeah, no, that's much clearer. Thank you.
Anything else? Jen?
No, I think it's really clear, actually. I really appreciate how you guys took our comments and weaved them in. It's really, for me, a lot clearer, actually. It's good.
Yeah, I think we're just really in a holding pattern at this point, just waiting to see what happens on the revenue side.
I'm sorry. Anyway, and, you know, I, from what we are hearing at this point, there is concern that we may not have a budget by April 1st, so we may be waiting longer. We'll just have to figure out, as we get closer to the budget vote, what do we do when we don't have an idea of what our revenue will be for next year? And we'll try to make the best decisions we can, based on the circumstances and the information we have. And the way that we presented both budgets, we know where we are in relationship to dollars and cents, whether it's the first budget or the second budget that we proposed, and we can react accordingly if the budget does come to us after the budget vote.
Just a couple of questions. The Makerspace staff, what grades would that be, most likely? Do we know that? That person?
Well, we were looking at, it would certainly be K-8, and then there is going to be a connection with the high school, and that will have to be further delineated, once we know that position is going to be part of our program next year.
And the kindergarten numbers, anything new?
64.
So we're at a holding pattern?
We're at a holding pattern.
Good. Keep holding. The SRO conversation, Brian, thank you for just clarifying. I have to tell you, I was a skeptic early in the year on the whole concept, and I was around when we had Officer Mooney, back when, maybe 10 years ago. And I've done a lot of research and reading and listening. I sat in on the meeting with Brian and Dr. Bowers, with the Putnam County Sheriff's people and the SRO from Carmel, and I've really come to appreciate the position a lot more than I did. It seems like, and NISBA has done some reports on things, and I've read some post Sandy Hook reports, as well as the whole counseling side, it really seems like something that we really should have. And I could just see it being a huge asset for the districts, and as people kind of put their arms around it when it physically is here, I think they're going to kind of look at it and say, you know, "I'm surprised that we actually haven't had it for a while." And I understand why we haven't, but I've really come to appreciate what they do, and if you do get the right person, which I would have to assume we would through the interview process, how it could just be a huge help for the district, K through 12. Take some load off of what you guys are doing, day in and day out, because obviously, you know, we have a principal, but we don't necessarily have an assistant high school principal. And I could just see it all the way, K through 12, and, you know, we all connect differently with people, and I think this would just be something that would be a huge asset to the district, and I'd love to see if we can just make it work, and whatever it takes, I'm happy to write letters and bang on people's doors if possible. But I just think it's something that we really should have, and I've come to, you know, really appreciate the position from where I was seven months ago. And then lastly, just on the vehicle thing, I went back and I listened to Mike Towery's presentation from February 3rd, and if you listen to his eight-minute clip, and you scan forward to a minute, an hour and 20 minutes into the video, so you don't have to listen to the whole thing, in eight minutes, he explains the bus proposition absolutely perfectly. And you have to go back to listen to it. Explains the vehicles, he explains where they go, how many runs we do, which ones are coming up that won't pass inspection, which ones probably a year from now won't, and why we need it. And in that eight minutes, it tells you everything you need to know about the bus proposition, as far as I'm concerned. And the fact that you guys are also talking about a replacement schedule and putting one back on the books, I think is a plus, and the taxpayers, I think, would appreciate that as well. So, thank you, Mike, and for anyone out there, February 3rd, scan an hour and 20 minutes in, and spend eight minutes with Mike, and it'll definitely explain the whole proposition. So.
So, before we move on, there are two things that I would like to highlight, if people who are watching were not part of the discussion when we presented the first two budgets. The first thing that I'd like to highlight is that we were talking about the kindergarten numbers being 64, we're looking at, really looking at intervening into the kindergarten numbers when they exceed 66. And we know that we need to do something to help support our teachers, so we give the appropriate level of support in literacy and math, and just becoming used to being a school member and part of our school community. One of the things that we are thinking of, and one of the things that is in the budget, regardless of whether we go beyond the tipping point or we stay under the tipping point, is we do have the, a literacy slash special ed position that is in regardless of the numbers. And what will happen with this position will change based on the numbers if we do exceed the 66 in kindergarten. But whether we do or not, we know that there is a need for some additional support in the primary years. And we do not have as much reading instruction, and we do not have as much special ed or RTI support as we have in the past, and this is something that we really feel needs to be rectified this year. And it's something that regardless of what happens, we can use this individual in many different places, but we are truly believers that front-loading the support for our young kids and creating a strong foundation is going to make a difference all through their schooling. And so we're looking at doing something now that may have a 12-year effect. So I wanted to just stress that, and either way, that position is in the budget. The other thing that I would like to share is that we really spent a lot of time looking within and repurposing money that was within the budget, and looking to make sure that we're spending our dollars as wisely as we possibly can. One of the things that you did hear Ann Dineo talk about is the education consortium. We have been in conversation with Putnam Valley and Garrison, and we are creating a consortium of three school districts. We are going to be calling ourselves the Hudson River Valley Education Consortium, and we are going to be providing sports, support services, and special ed services for students in all three districts at a reduced cost of what it has been in the past. And so this is just another example of different ways in which we're trying to repurpose and use money differently, so we can provide more services for our kids with just minimal increases. And all the things you have heard us talk about tonight, all the different additions that we are, we'd like to bring into the budget, they are, again, all happening with, under the tax levy limit, and so I'd like to stress that, there's a lot of different ways we are budgeting this year without just increasing the funding. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Thanks, Ann. Any questions from the public on budget while we're on topic? No? Okay. Superintendent's report?
Okay, so, we have already talked a little bit about the peace officer and the student resource officer, and again, we are working with Putnam County to try to help offset the cost between a peace officer and a resource officer, so we can provide a resource officer to our district for next year. The second thing on the superintendent's report, this is a week where we have a day and a half of superintendent's conference days. This Thursday is a half-day for students, and we will have staff developers from the P E B C coming into the district, and on Thursday morning, they will actually be teaching classes. The staff developers will be teaching classes with our students, and our teachers will be watching, and these lab sites will then be discussed, and parts of the thing, parts of the instructional process that they are exhibiting in the classrooms will hopefully be interwoven into our classes shortly thereafter. In the afternoon, we are working with the P E B C, and a group of our teachers will be looking at some concentrated staff development in pedagogy, and we are looking at learning strategy instruction and metacognition, which you'll hear us say a lot in the next couple of years. Also, Mr. Olm's teachers are going to be working with a consultant on how to best use iPads in the classroom in the afternoon of Thursday, and then on Friday, we are going to have a full day of, full staff, staff development with the P E B C. We also have a spring recess coming up, and our recess will be from March 30th through April 3rd. A reminder that Monday, April 6th, we will now be in session because it is a snow makeup day, but we have, we will have the full week recess uninterrupted, and we're very, we're very happy about that. We also have a Board of Education business meeting on Tuesday, April 7th, and we invite you to join us for that.
Thank you. So, April 7th is our next meeting. At that point, hopefully, we'll have some clarity from New York State on our, on the revenues and the state budget, because it's due April 1st. We're scheduled to adopt a budget on April 14th, if I have it correctly.
Yes.
Right? Okay, so we have a little bit of a window there where we need something to happen on the state level, maybe during the course of the next two weeks while we're awake. Keep us posted if anything develops.
I'll let you know.
Do you want to comment a little on April 7th? The board forum informally?
Yeah, so, before the April 7th board meeting, so from 6:00 to 7:00, or maybe 5:45 to 6:45, I think we're still working out the timing, we're going to have an informal forum that's about, what does it mean to be a board member? And it's really, it's for everybody and anybody who's interested in knowing kind of what we do and why we do it, but it's also specifically targeted towards people who are interested in becoming board members, who are board candidates, for them to learn kind of what we do and why we do it as well. So, there'll be two current board members, Joe and I will be there, as well as two former board members that we've invited, and I think we're still awaiting final approval that they're coming, so I won't say their names. But it'll be kind of an informal chat about what we do, and hopefully, it's an opportunity to educate the public, as well as maybe inspire some Board of Education candidacy.
Right. And the PTA is looking to sponsor it, so they'll have information that they'll send out. And it's an informal conversation, and, you know, we'll pitch why it's a good idea, and we'll pitch why it's important, and then people will hopefully jump on the bandwagon and pick up their petitions, because they're due April 20th at 5:00. And we'll have a whole slew of people who want to serve the district and make good positive change for everybody. And that's what we want. So, okay. Thank you, Jen. Information reports? I'll defer.
Mr. Harrington?
Okay, since our last workshop meeting, our middle school held our second annual successful middle school reads. I want to just acknowledge Camille Linson, Laura Hammond, Danielle PC, and Tom Virgadamo, members of our middle school improvement team that were instrumental in organizing that evening. I also want to thank Scholastic for the donation of the Misfits. Scholastic was so interested and enthusiastic about our middle school community reads that they actually published a brief article on their Scholastic blog, and I just want to share, what's included in that blog is some unsolicited feedback from a parent that I think best captures, really, the essence of the evening. So I'm just going to share that. "In addition to the important subject matter covered last night and the very important conversations that took place, the kids experienced an evening at school and with their friends that wasn't about performances or expectations, or even their futures, but instead allowed them to be who they are in this moment without judgment or constraint. What a gift for them to be given the time and space to have honest discussions about the tricky social terrain of adolescence and life, while being supported by this net, while being supported by the net of this incredible community." I think that best captures the essence of the evening. And I also do want to acknowledge our fine, fabulous, stellar middle school staff for their participation. We had quite a bit of participation from our middle school teachers, and I really want to just acknowledge and applaud their willingness to attend and participate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again, everybody. The favorite part that I have of my monthly report are the accolades. So, you can read all of the other happenings in the building, there are a lot of things going on, it's a very busy season. Our seniors are in New Orleans right now, our sophomores are getting ready to head down to DC. But there's something not listed on my list of accolades there, and that is, we had two students participate in the Garrison Arts Center's mentor program this year. And just a little bit about that, begun in 1988, the mentor program calls for proposals from high school students in five counties and pairs each student with an artist who serves as a mentor throughout a three-month period, culminating in an exhibition. Each year, artists are asked to offer their time and expertise to guide and advise students as they develop their work. Well, the exhibition this year opens this Saturday, and then runs for a couple weeks thereafter. The Garrison Arts Center is open Tuesday through Sunday from 10 to 5:00. And our two mentees this year from Haldeen are talented artists Wiley Thornquist and Mimi Whitson. So, congratulations to them, and I encourage everybody to come out and see their work, along with all the other fine artists in the region. And thank you so much to the Garrison Arts Center for extending us this opportunity every year.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
So, I too wanted to share with you how exciting it is to be working with Garrison and Putnam Valley, as we look together to form a consortium to meet the needs of our students. It's been a great adventure with Dr. Bowers, and we're continuing next week with visiting each other's programs, so that we know what's in place and what, where we can expand and enhance what we already have.
Thank you.
Couple things, just Scholar-Athlete Award was presented to four out of our five teams this winter, so we had varsity, varsity boys' basketball, boys indoor track, girls indoor track, and then a merger with Hen-Hut and Hockey. What was interesting about that is, with the whole process, they select certain players from each team, and we actually had, I think, probably five out of the seven or, of the players that, you know, were eligible for the Scholar-Athlete were from Haldeen, so I thought that was impressive. Very impressive group of individuals. If you came to, I don't know if anybody made it last night to our sports awards night, actually, one of the, the hockey coach couldn't make it, so Ramsey Heitman did a great job filling in for him, kind of giving a recap of the season. And last night was a nice night, everybody showed up, and, you know, our booster club does a great job getting that organized, so it's always been a nice way to end our seasons and take care of things. Actually, it seems that every time we have that, that somebody doesn't end their season. They always end up playing in the States that week, but it's always a nice event. One thing I just wanted to mention regarding the Athletic Handbook, is we've made just a couple, I made a couple of changes to it, that I'm sure you got, that all of you will get a copy of it, I sent it to Dr. Bowers yesterday afternoon. There in bold regarding athletic activities in Part C, we're always, we've been in discussion, kind of just formalize it what we call our tipping points for teams, and when we need to look at whether or not we need to add a coach and things like that. So those have been updated, and those are in bold. And then also added a statement to, to, I'm sorry, add a statement underneath, again, under athletic activities, as, "If a program at any level has beyond the maximum numbers of participants, the district has set aside funds for additional coaches. The athletic budget will review the needs of each program on an annual basis, will make every effort to include all students eligible for participation." So that's been added for your review, and then we can look to obviously adopt that for next year, because there's been some changes. Okay?
We'll get a copy of that?
Yes, Friday report.
Thanks. Thanks, Tom.
Good evening. I'm glad to report, I don't have to report on snow anymore. So, yeah, that's right, keep my fingers... So, yeah, that's right, keep my fingers crossed. I just want to touch base on three things that, two of which are in the report, one's not in the report, because I didn't know if we'd have it finished in time, that we've been doing for safety in the school district. One is, we need new alarm panels here in our school. And we're looking at new alarm panels that will now tell if we have a problem in the school, let's say, smoke or fire. It will now tell the fire department exactly where the location is. We did have a problem one other time when there was a smoke alarm that went off here, and the fire department came up and they're looking all around, and that took time. So we're just making it, trying to make it so it's a little quicker and a little safer that way. Second one is, we're still working on, we had a specialist look at the lights in the high school stairwells. We had Jeff Dent, he is a previous owner for Electric Warehouse in Danbury, Connecticut, now he's one of their salesmen. He offered us a couple of suggestions, and one was really nice. He gave us an experimental light to put on the, on the side walls. Right now, we have four lights there like that, and they're not LED lighting, and they don't last long, they're not that bright. So we put them up there, and it was beautiful until I heard the price. So the next suggestion is that we're going to now convert those to LED lighting ourselves with new ballasts, and we're going to do all that in-house and save a lot of money that way, and it'll be a better light, and that'll be safer for the kids in the stairway. The third one that was not in my report, I want to talk about the playground a little bit because now is the time of year where the kids are going to be using it. Back in the late fall, we had Playground Medic came in and gave a report, as did Nicer a month ago, and they just touched on a couple of areas here that could use a little bit of improvement. So we did put all new swing chains in, all new tops pieces, and all new seats. That was all done, it's completed today, so the playground's now ready for the kids, for the spring. Thank you.
Would you also mind talking a little bit about Monolith? We do have confirmation that they are coming into, to meet with us, and they'll be presenting at the board meeting on April 7th.
Okay. Monolith Solar did come, and Dr. Bowers and myself were there. They had some new options for us, or new option. They did buy some property up in Poughkeepsie, and they want to have like a little solar farm there for us where that energy does go back to, not Con Ed, Central Hudson. Central Hudson gets that. We pay 10 cents per kilowatt hour to Monolith, but meanwhile, we're getting a 16 cent credit from Central Hudson, and so we're going to get back 6 cents that way. At least, that's the way I understand it. Does that sound pretty accurate?
If we have the solar farm.
Excuse me?
If we have the solar farm.
If we have the solar farm. The benefits to that is, number one, we don't need SED approval, and we also don't have to touch our roofs. And we're going to be making more money that way, saving more money. So I'd like to see it all on paper, and they gave us a nice presentation, but I do want to see the exact figures and the ending figures that we're going to get from them. So I am looking forward to it.
So they're coming here on the 7th, they're going to do their presentation?
Yes.
Okay. If there's anybody on the board who wants anything specific for them to cover?
Yep, let me know.
Let us know ahead of time so they can come prepare. Great.
Okay. Also, to let you know, we just did get our building permits from SED to put the panels on the roof. Nice timing.
Truman was president when we filed that. Thanks, Mike. We have a student report also, Mike Gengelis, I think. You're never too late to go back to school.
First, I want to put a shout out. Basketball dinner the other night, Jen Wilson received a lot of accolades for what she does for the basketball team, actually, for what she does for everybody here at Haldane. I think she deserves a round of applause. I mean, she does a lot for Haldane that you're not seeing if you're not around, some of these events. So, my son tells me a lot what she does, the pizza, every, I mean, she's, she's a superstar. She really is. This is from my son, obviously, he's at a basketball dinner tonight, getting ready for states. He says, "Send this to Joe." So I'm like his secretary, I guess. This is the second time in a row I had to do this, too. "I am part of the peer mentoring program, which is a program where 11th and 12th graders meet with 8th graders to talk about common difficulties or anxieties of high school. It is a good opportunity for 8th graders to get comfortable with the older, with the older kids and understand that there are, there are people there to help them with their problems. Overall, it's a good experience for both 8th graders and us upperclassmen. I would also like to say that the boys' basketball team has made it to the state semifinals and will play Lake George in Glen Falls on Friday at 5:00 PM. We'd appreciate if we can get a lot of support. If we win, we'll play in the state finals on Saturday night at 7:00."
Great. Thank you, Stephen. Good luck. Thank you, Mike. Nice to be a high school junior and have your own secretary. Committee minutes, building and grounds, February 25th. Any questions? Okay. Any questions from the public before we let the administrators go? No? Okay. You want to?
Well, do you mind if we go out of sequence? Because we have the video that's our PBL, my PBL presentation that I thought the kids could probably show a lot better than I could, so.
Sure.
So we're going a little out of sequence tonight, and what I do on a monthly basis is share where we are in our project-based learning growth and development. And tonight, instead of sharing some of the things that our students have done, we thought we would show you what our students have done. And this is a chemistry project, and a group of students came together to show a chemistry, what is it, Rumpcorf lamp?
Rumpcorf lamps.
Rumpcorf lamps, the creation, and I'm saying it like they do in the video. But it's, it's a presentation that shows the chemistry involved in the creation of these lamps, and they do an excellent job with showing it.
All right, guys, we're making a rap.
No. It doesn't have to be a rap.
Of course we're making a rap.
It's got to be a rap.
It has to be a rap. Of course we are.
It really doesn't have to be a rap. She didn't say it had to be a rap, and that would be so much harder, and I don't want to do the work, and neither does Liam.
All right, fine, it doesn't have to be a rap. But we should probably pick a topic now.
Yeah, topic.
I have the Wikipedia page right here, look, it has a little thing.
Look, knocked a loose in clouds. Oh my God, it's in Estonia.
Guys, I think we're forgetting about the most important light of all, the light of Jesus, the shroud. You know, people still say that the shroud emits light.
Annihilation.
How about you guys do Rumpcorf lamp?
Go let her in here. Rumpcorf lamps?
Yeah, that sounds awesome. Let's do it.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't think we should make this decision so quickly. I don't like it.
Guys, give us one good reason why we shouldn't do Rumpcorf lamps.
Fine.
If you've ever read the books by the mad Jules Verne, you'd have read about a lamp in which fuel wasn't burned. Yeah, sure, you read about it in science fiction, but there was nothing fake about it. This was science, nonfiction. A Rumpcorf coil in Geisler's tube made of glass emitted a bright red light torn by nitrogen gas, made for use by miners who were light deep underground. It was a heavy-duty lamp, it wasn't messing around. Made by Alphasthuma at the mines of Salt Free and Dr. Camille Benoit, sel aganier prix, from the French Academy of Science, who thought it was pretty swag. Alphasth Camille had a thousand francs in the bag. But who was this Rumpcorf? He didn't make the lamp, but I bet that doesn't mean he wasn't still a champ. Hannover, Germany, born and raised. In England and France, he spent most of his days. He set up shop in Paris during the industrial age where he proved a coil made by Nicholas Callan.
Cage!
It's Callan.
Cage!
Nicholas Callan is his name.
Cage!
Nicholas Callan.
Cage!
Callan. Yep, that's right. He didn't even make the coil, but that doesn't mean it wasn't worth all his dough. He improved Callan's version using glass insulation. Napoleon gave him the prize, 50 grand for innovation. If it wasn't for Rumpcorf, the lamp wouldn't have been made, and that's why it's Rumpcorf after whom it was named.
The lamp was powered by a battery, but if it wasn't for the coil, it would work just as bad as the Tin Man without oil. The induction coil was an electrical transformer on the stage of electronics. It's been quite a performance. In fact, it was the first transformer, no other robot in disguise. Stop fooling around. This is serious. Come on, guys. Producing high voltage pulses from a low voltage supply, I'm going to try and explain it, but I'm no Bill Nance. In the primary coil, an interrupter vibrates, and a secondary coil uses the pulses it creates to light up our lamp and many other things to get their power from the Rumpcorf coils rings. The lamp itself was a tube made by Geisler. Allow me to explain the workings of this device, Lur. A cylinder of glass, electrodes at each end, a high voltage current through it you could send. But how could you do that, you might want to ask, if you can't pass electricity through the airtight glass? Geisler, you see, infused platinum wire into the glass was a feat to admire. The electrical current passed through a gas in the tube, disassociating the electrons of the gas it went through. This formed ions of a positive type. When the electrons returned, the atoms threw us light. In the Rumpcorf lamp, nitrogen gas was used, which emitted a red light, so green uranium was infused in the glass.
Hi, I'm Liam, and I'm here to say Harper's rap was hecka dope, but let's not stray from the actual chemistry that we're here to explain. Go ahead, talk about the electrons and the energy that they gain, but in order to understand why the light is red, you need to have a look at what Niels Bohr said. And Dr. Bohr said, "Nothing, you idiots, Dr. Bohr's dead, he's locked in my basement."
What? You, you can't say that. What, what if, what if Mr. Olm sees this?
Oh, God, you're right. And Dr. Bohr said, "Nothing, you idiots, Dr. Bohr's dead since like 1910."
He died in 1962.
And Dr. Bohr said, "A lot, you idiots, just because he's dead ain't mean there's nothing to be said." Dr. Bohr's model of the atom can show what makes the nitrogen gas glow.
So the way atoms emit light starts by them gaining energy. When they gain energy, electrons rise in energy levels when they're excited. Bohr's model helps us understand this. The atom has multiple energy levels for electrons to orbit the nucleus in. When the electrons receive energy, in the case of the Rumpcorf coil, the electrons rise to a certain energy level. In the cathode ray tube, electrons just rise to a higher level orbiting the nucleus. But in a Geisler tube, which is used in a Rumpcorf lamp, the current actually disassociates the electrons from the nitrogen atoms, forming positive nitrogen ions. When these electrons recombine with the ions, they release the energy that they gained in the form of photons or light. In the case of nitrogen, the emit light is mostly red. Red light has a long wavelength and a low energy. Hit it.
So there you have it, folks. You now know the story of the predecessor of fluorescence at great lamp in all its glory. Rumpcorf, Dermaus and Geisler, and Callan were all champs. Because of them, we now have? Let's all light up.
Shroud. 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 Shroud!
What about a film club?
Well, we're, you will see many different types of film depending on the grade. We actually saw a couple of them today in Leah's classroom that the kids made that were equally as talented and wonderful on a 6th grade level, so they were great. You'll start to see a lot of that as they go through it. It's a, it's probably one of the favorite ways to, to show their learning. Yep.
Good stuff. Correspondence. Do we want to dismiss anyone, or?
Well, yes, we could say goodnight to our administrators.
You guys a long day? Thank you. Appreciate it.
We'll see you in the morning.
Thanks, guys.
Hundreds of people at home watching.
Hundreds. Okay, correspondence. H1, we have a correspondent letter from a former teacher, Ginny Pedala. I'll paraphrase because it's on board docs, basically just requesting the reinstatement of the high school internship program. And my understanding is that's in the works?
Yes, we're looking at doing it somewhat differently than it has been done in the past, and instead of it being in a classroom setting, we're hoping to have a stipend position, but it's certainly under discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Pedala. We also have a correspondence from Ms. Gillian Thorpe, the library director of Butterfield Library, and basically, it's just a cover letter along with the signed petition for them to be, on a proposition for our May ballot. And I'll just read the quick summation. Shall the Haldane Central School District, Putnam County, be authorized to levy taxes in the amount of $73,0150 for the annual support of the Julia L. Butterfield Memorial Library Cold Spring? And the school district, if in fact it passed, would collect and disperse the taxes, and we have basically nothing to say with the operations of the whole thing. And Julia, can you just draft a simple letter back to Mrs. Thorpe from the board saying that we've acknowledged, that we've received it, and it'll be placed on the May ballot? Great. Thanks, I appreciate it. Consent agenda minutes from March 10th. Motion?
Motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. J1, J, consent agenda personnel. Motion?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. K, unfinished business, project-based learning. We just showed the video. Is there anything else you want to comment?
We have, we will have many different, of our many different types of project-based learning units of study that will be highlighted in an evening that we will hold at the end of May, and so please be aware that the, the information will be coming out, and we'll be inviting any member of the Haldane community to come in and look at what we've done this year. And do you have the date of that? I know that you're coordinating it with Julia. What is it?
I don't want to talk about that.
I want to say the 23rd, but I, I think we have to finalize the date before I share it too widely.
Okay.
We also have the Community That Cares Coalition meeting. We had it on last, last week that shared the results of the survey that our students took last year, and once again, Joe DiMarzo and his staff came in and shared the results and also some of the things that our community can be looking at to help students make the right choices. So we will continue to publicize the dates of the meeting, and that's something, it will be an ongoing discussion with new ideas coming through. We also have Monolith Solar, as we shared, will be coming in to speak to us at the first board meeting in April, and we welcome anybody who has an interest in knowing what's, what the options are for the Haldane School community as far as the solar panels.
April 7th, Monolith. Come on all out for that. New business, L1, approval of resolution for the annual district meeting. Julia, you want to walk us through this one?
Yes. This is, this is the resolution for the annual district meeting and the vote on the propositions, which will be held on May 19th, and the recommended action is the Board of Education approves the attached resolution calling for the annual district meeting and vote for propositions, and election of school board members on May 19th. I believe all of the text of, you know, the entire resolution is contained on board docs.
Yeah. And this is a procedural thing? So in other words, we have to adopt this resolution so that we can then do our first legal notice, which is April 1st?
Correct.
And that's all by law?
Yes.
Great. And it's roll call? I think?
Yes.
I think?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
We have to do a motion first, or?
Do we? No, just a roll. Just a roll call.
Just a roll call.
Thank you. President Curdo?
Aye.
Vice President Daley?
Aye.
Trustee Henderson?
Aye.
And trustee Schwartz?
Aye.
Thank you. And the resolution is adopted. Thank you.
L2, policy review. This is a revision of a policy regarding use of district credit cards. First reading, if I understand it correctly. You want to give any background, or?
Sure. As we begin to look at sending our teachers to various institutes, one of the things that we need to have is a credit card to hold hotel rooms, or flights, or, depending on the institute, the institute itself. So this is something that we would like to have available for use for the, the district with limited access, the only two people authorized to use the card would be Anne and myself.
Okay. Would it make sense to add a sentence or some language, and maybe it's implied that the purchase goes through the normal claims auditor process? Or is that just implied? Would that something we would want to add in there?
It might have been referred to in there. If not, we can certainly include any language that, that would make you comfortable with that. Let me see, I don't have.
It says, strict procedures will be adhered to so as to comply with the auditing standards regarding the use of the credit card.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, I think that using the same guidelines as, all purchasing guidelines as set forth by the district.
Right.
Something like that. Like three bids, and if it's over a certain amount. Now, also, is this, is this a credit card, or is it a, more of a, like a procurement card, in the sense that it's, like you put the money in first, and then it comes off?
No, this is actually a credit card. I mean, that's what districts normally use.
Okay.
You will find, if you looked at the normal protocols within a district, there is a, there is a credit card, a district credit card, with very limited access.
Right.
To the use.
Okay. Because I have one for my school, but it's, they call, we call it a procurement card, and the money's already in there, so like, I can, it's already been paid for, it's put in first, and then you spend it off, as opposed to spending it, and here's your bill, pay the bill. So I, I don't know, I mean, maybe that's something to look into, as, because, because then it doesn't, it can't generate interest, obviously, because it's, the money's coming off, it's been prepaid. I mean, you could argue that then you're losing interest money, you can make that, but you could put it in, you know, in increments throughout the year, like, so, you know, $5,000 the first half, $5,000 the other half. So I don't know if that's something you, you want to take a look at.
How do you know what to put in?
Well, you, you put in based on, you know, you start off, you, you know, you don't have to put it all in in one shot, so you say, you know, you start the year off, you put $3,000 in, and then as the numbers go down, let's put another $3,000 in, and, you know, it, it would roll over.
Yeah, I mean, it would be the same as encumbering funds for something.
Yeah.
That's what we do with purchase orders, but.
Right. So I don't know, I mean, that's what, what, I, I don't know if that's something that is, if that's a typical thing, or if most schools that have credit cards actually are credit cards that would generate interest.
Yeah, I, I believe that most schools do. I mean, we can do an analysis in the region, but I can tell you that I believe that most schools just have a district credit card.
But would it start, would it start generating interest? Like, would it be a special credit card? Like, would it be a credit where, you know, if you pay it within 20, you know, is it going to start generating interest?
Right, well, I can see that would be a problem. No, I mean, I believe that the district just pays it off, pay whatever it is, and then it depends on, if it's an American Express, you have to pay it off.
Right.
If it's a Visa or a MasterCard, there would be some, you would be paying it off on a monthly basis, so.
Right.
I mean, either way, it would work, but, but basically, we have to have a number and a card to hold, hold reservations, and so that's the direction we're looking at going.
You might want to get some miles out of that.
Yeah, that's actually not a bad idea.
Teachers pro bono.
Yep, that's a good idea.
I like this one, you don't get the money unless you need it. Just slaying it out in advance.
The policy does say expenses incurred on each credit card shall be paid in such a manner as to avoid interest charges.
Okay. So it's highly regulated, obviously.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Do we want to have a second reading? Do we want to add this to April 7th, and then go the assumption that we'll approve it unless anyone has any concerns? How's that sound? Any concerns, email them to Dr. Bowers and Anne, between now and then.
Does this help in the, Anne, I know, because you're from the audit committee, you know, we used to talk about issues that would come up with the emergency situations where the invoices and the purchase orders didn't match, is this going to help in that situation? Is that, do you see it being used in those type of situations?
I see it being used in situations where perhaps the vendor does not take a credit card, or in holding reservations. Still, the, the purchase order needs to be cut before the, the credit card can be used. It's just going to be part of the procedure, we're going to have to follow the same procedure to expend any district funds. We will do a requisition and have that approved, generate a purchase order, the purchasing agent will have to approve the purchase order, and at that time, after that approval, then the district credit card can be used to make that purchase, and when the bill comes in, all of that supporting documentation would go to the claims auditor to actually pay the credit card.
And that was my other question, so the claims auditor would have access, would, would review the charges on the credit card as well?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else new from the board? Nope.
So what's the date of the, we're looking to adopt on the 14th, is that the story?
Yeah, the budget calendar has April 7th. We're, we're going to get supposedly revenues and the tax levy projections per the budget calendar. We're hoping, fingers crossed, that New York State has a budget, so that we've got that piece in place. We'll talk about the budget on the 7th, I know you're not going to be here, but if you want to pipe in and email me any questions before the 7th, I'll be happy to have them addressed at the meeting. Cecilia does a great job of turning the videos around quick, so on your return trip, you could watch the meeting video, so you're ready for the 14th.
Okay.
Okay, so you're not all vacation, or wherever you're going. And then on the 14th, we have a new meeting, 7 o'clock, which our goal is to adopt the budget.
What's the drop date? Date for budget adoption? I know we built in a little bit of wiggle room.
I believe it was the 21st, but we didn't want to go for the very last day, so we added that meeting a week before, so that in case there was a delay, we still had that last one. Sort of like setting your alarm clock a little earlier.
Can we clarify that on the 7th, just what the drop date date is? Just in case, so in case that world falls apart on the 7th, and we have to bob and weave a little in our planning?
Yeah.
We know in the back of our heads what that contingency is. Not that we want to, or should, but just so we know the, the drop date date. And then after the 14th, for all intents and purposes, according to my schedule, we have a workshop on the, well, we have a workshop on the 21st, and that's when we're doing our final book read. Okay. And then we have a meeting on February, uh, May 5th, and May 19th is the budget vote and the trustee vote, and then I get to retire at 9:01. Okay. Okay, so we're all good? All on the same page?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Leah.